Ladies and gentlemen, let's get seated so we can start the meeting. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, it's on. Let's come on in and get a seat, we're gonna start in a second. Yeah, yeah, it's on. Let's come on in and get a seat, we're gonna start in a second. When we do the presentation for him... Okay, it is 6:04 PM, didn't know Doug was that popular, we'd go a little overtime. No laughing from the PETA gallery. Today is the 28th of March 2019, and we are at a reception and regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council and Redevelopment Accessory Agency, held here at Clear Lake City Hall Chambers on Olympic Drive in Clear Lake, California. Madam Clerk, if you do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Sluton. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here. Is Jim Comstock in the audience? Jim, if you'd leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll be honored to thank you. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd remain standing for a few moments, Pastor Bob Myers will do an invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for your guidance, for the decisions that we have to make, and for the people that are surrounding us here, Lord, and that the blessings that you have for this city and this county have multiplied because of the decisions that we've made. In Jesus Christ, I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We need to do any changes to the agenda? It's time for any modifications?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove item number six from the consent calendar.
Six from the consent, okay. And I'll take a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda minus item number six.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we will... We have a couple of presentations, actually, three or four, but we're gonna start out with a presentation if the council would join me down below. This is congratulations to Doug and a sadness for the city for losing an awesome Public Works Director. Doug has been with the city from 2001 to today, and then he's gone. Moved him back to Idaho. Dirty dog. And he's gonna send me pictures of all the deer he claimed he got, but he probably didn't. Doug has done wonders over the years with little resources, little staff. But the city is now moving forward under... We have moved forward a lot this last four years under the direction of our soon-to-be former city manager with Measure V. Doug has seen some of his dreams having come true. It took us three tries to get Measure V. The first two, nobody followed his advice, he won't let us forget that. Get one little thing going, and that's the end of it. And we finally got Measure V, and our roads are being fixed. It's gonna take some time because it's been... They've been abused since this city was incorporated, and so now it's coming about. We have a staff, Public Works staff, we have equipment that we're purchasing in the Measure V, which is our once-in sales tax, and a lot of that has to do with Doug, as well as others, within not only the city staff, but the community. So I'm gonna give him a chance to... Anybody else have a word?
Doug has done amazing things with very little money to do it, and we just see him... Sorry to see him go now that we have some money, but he has done... He's done an amazing thing.
We'll think of him while we spend it.
Doug has been a friend to me since well before I was on the council, and you've always been my go-to guy when I wanted to know what was really happening out there, and I'm gonna miss that. I do expect an invitation back to Idaho to see if I can help you with some of those deer one of these days. Oh, you can't hear me? Anyway, Doug, we're gonna really miss you. It's gonna... There's gonna be a big hole to fill, and hopefully we can find somebody that at some point in time will begin to measure up to what you've done for us over the past however many years you've been here. So, good luck.
Well, of course Doug is more than just the Public Works Director, he is like the two other council members said, a friend... He's a friend to everybody here and a friend to myself, and I appreciate that, but there's something beyond just Measure V as far as funding sources, and you know, you were instrumental in helping with Measure V, but you've also been there through every aspect of getting us some grants for different projects throughout the city, and those can't be left behind either. Those are huge achievements for our city, we've gone a long way, and a lot of that's been done in the midst of all this chaos we've had with the... With all the disasters, and you were a key component to the salvation of our community during those disasters, and I just wanna make sure to mention that as well, and the county, absolutely. So, the efforts that you've afforded our community will never be forgotten, we very much appreciate everything, and I will be also coming up there and spending some time with you and take the claim... Take some claim... Critter claim. So, thank you so much, Doug.
First off, I want everybody to wave because Lori, his wife, is watching on TV on the stream line, so wave to her. You know, Doug basically came on pretty much the same time I did here at the city, and I want you guys to look at this man because this is where Public Works can go. He started off in just Public Works, and just showed... 2010, he went up to 11 million, I don't know where he went from there. We wouldn't even have as much done as what we do, so you're gonna be a hard person to measure up to, I hope you'll be there for the next person that steps in and has questions, and I just want you to know that I've appreciated our friendship, and I appreciate Lori who really... You know, we gotta give the wife's credit for these guys because when they, you know, when they... Most people in their everyday lives don't realize what we give up as working for the public and city council and anything that you do, supervisors and stuff, how much you give up of your personal life, pretty much give it up. And so, I wish you well, Doug, in your new endeavor and your business, and hopefully someday I'll be able to come up and have a cup of coffee with you. All right, and you enjoy.
One more thing, I didn't realize that Lori was watching this. On Facebook, she said to give you a hug.
Forget the pat. So, we have a plaque that is presented to Douglas Heron, Public Works Director, 2001-2019, in appreciation for your many years of public service to our community and achievements in helping to improve our parks and city streets, presented by the city of Clear Lake. Okay, let me go get a couple of forms, I'll be right back to them.
Okay, so, for... You know, sometimes you have to use a lot of caution around Doug. You guys who know him know this, right? So, we thought this would be an appropriate parting gift. Most of us have signed this for you, so we hope this is a little bit of a memory of us here, you know.
And you thought you were getting a gold one.
No, I mean, Doug, so my year here, I've known Doug for a little while longer than that, but Doug has a brash exterior most of the time, and he likes to come into my office and slam his budget book down to my desk and like stare at me for a while. I'm like, "Hey Doug, how's it going? Good morning, what can I do for you?" And so, you know, I'm gonna miss arguing with you a little bit, but he also has a huge heart. You know, he actually came into my office this week and gave me that same look and slammed his speech down that he was gonna give tonight because he just... He wants to share the right thing with all of you and how much this community means to him, and he's a hard worker. He doesn't give up, he's tenacious, and he's done a lot of great things for this city. So, I appreciate working with you, I wish you the best, and I appreciate you for being a buddy and athlete.
Was gonna add a little bit when I do gotta get all choked up or not. This being pointed like this, but... So, my farewell speech, it's hard to believe this day has finally come. I have to say that I have mixed feelings today. It's wonderful to look forward to a future of more leisure times and getting around to the many things that I've always said I wanted to accomplish, but it also feels sadness at leaving behind a career that has been such an important part of my life. The city feels like a family to me, although I know I will see many of you in the years to come. Leaving today feels like moving away from home for the very first time. It has great promise, and yet... And yet, the thought of no longer seeing my family members every day is hard to imagine. I love you guys. Greg Folsom, I wanna thank Greg Folsom for giving me a chance. He is the one... Greg was my 12th city manager in my career. Greg came here and he had a vision, and his vision was to turn me loose, and we had an agreement, I said, "You let me do my job, you can have the credit, just let me do my job," and that's basically what he did. We've been very successful, we've been very successful, and thank you. You're welcome. That's the way it works. To Alan Flora, I wanna say, you know, we set the path, and I feel with your vision and direction and your team, you're destined for greatness. This is a great city, and I know that the growth and innovation that has been the hallmark of this organization for many years will continue and once again make this community a destination of choice. I totally feel that. On a personal note, I'd like to thank my wife Lori, who's watching, and we got a group in Council Idaho that's watching live in our coffee shop, so, hi, everybody. I wanna thank my wife Lori, who couldn't be here tonight. She's stood by my side and worked by my side for many years. She's given me that support that I needed to push through because I'm... Look, Alan had mentioned, I'm... I spent a lot of time, more time than I did at home here, it's just that's how I was raised. Spent a lot of time working with Jeff Smith back there in the back, enjoyed my time with Jeff Smith in the winter and the summer, working out in the lake and purposely putting me in front of the airboat so I could eat up all the nastiness that was coming off the spray. Some good times. My friend Tom, Tom Nixon here, got on the Conoco Regional Trails program with him and started working on that with him, and another good man, had a really good partnership with him when he was a park ranger down here in our park. Back when Tom was here, we didn't have flooding issues because Tom was kinda like us, me, was like to be proactive, and so we took care of mitigation, got our creeks cleaned out, got all the debris out, and we didn't have any problems, so, thanks, Tom. Brian Martin, what can I say? You know, the guy's been spectacular with our police department and our fire department, Cal Fire, you guys have been great partners, glad that we've been able to work together over the years. My hats off to you, you guys do a spectacular job. It's time for me to move on. I have enjoyed my time here at the city of Clear Lake with its many challenges, and I'm very proud of all the things that we've achieved in the last two decades. Thank you all for being here today and giving me this wonderful send-off. I feel very blessed to have been part of this great city. Thank you. I wanna mention a couple more things that I missed, I'm sorry about that. I gotta give a little credit to my team, my staff here at City Hall. Without them, and my partnership with Scott DeLeon and all my other local partners, without them, I wouldn't have been as successful as I've been. Scott DeLeon has been... Where's Scott at? I know he's in there, right there. He's Public Works Director for the County of Lake, Doug Ryder, City of Lakeport, we talk a lot, we talk an awful lot, and Scott has given me a lot of good advice over the years, and Phil Dow and Lisa David Bates and the team have been by my side over the years, and without their effort and their help, help guiding me, mold me, and push me, we wouldn't be where we are today without their help, so thank you to you guys, thank you very much.
behalf of everyone at the Public Works Department, we just wanna congratulate you on a wonderful career and commend you for specifically your time here at the city of Clear Lake. As has been pointed out, you've done some amazing things. I don't have to tell you that what we do is difficult. Between financial constraints, environmental constraints, getting stuff done is almost impossible, and it's getting more difficult, and frankly, I don't know how you've done it. Alan, you might wanna make sure that you have his contact information, so when the State Office of Inspector General comes asking questions, you'll know how to get a hold of him. But anyway, an amazing career, and it's already been said that you're leaving a void that's gonna be very difficult to fill. Typically, when someone retires, you get gifts and mementos and things, and so we've... I have a little something here for you, and you know, typically, typically the memento celebrates, oh, an accomplishment or a project that you're exceptionally proud of, and the memento that I have for you here today does neither of those. I'll just show this to the crowd, it was mentioned about algae and lyme bia. This picture is taken in 2010, the county had just acquired a new airboat, and Doug convinced me that if we came down with the airboat and drove around on the mat of algae, we could break up the algae and abate the smell. And as you're all aware, Doug is a persuasive fella, and I didn't really think it was gonna work, but I agreed to bring the airboat down, and we spent five hours driving back and forth the shore of Clear Lake trying to break up the algae, and if you get a chance to look at this picture, you'll see that the algae that we had broken up was already reforming, and so, the title of this picture is called insanity. And so, Doug, this, hopefully this will remind you and bring you fond memories of your days on Clear Lake with you and I in an airboat, so, thank you, friend.
Excuse me, my name is Phil Dow, I'm with the Area Planning Council. Worked over here since 1986 on various things in regional planning effort. I wrote up a couple pages to say, but I'm not gonna do that, mainly because I talk slow to begin with, but the only thing I can... Substance of what I wanna say is, when faced with not a lot of money, not a lot of staff, we have a job to do, somebody in that position can do three things. Sit there and collect the paycheck, sit there and complain, or just go do it, get the job done with the resources you have, and even some you don't. And that's what Doug is all about, he's a go-getter, he gets things done, and rubs some people the wrong way sometimes, well, often. Yeah, but he gets things done, and my parting comment is that, you know, we know he's moving to Idaho, and I hope he has a good time up there, but what he's done here is no small potatoes. Thank you.
My name is Tom Nixon, I consider Doug one of my best friends, but I know, as I look out here, that there are a lot of people here that consider Doug one of their best friends, too. I've lived in this county for about 35 years, I came up from Santa Barbara County, and I go all over this county with Doug, to sporting events, we fish, we do all kinds of things together. I have never, in the 35 years that I've lived here, ever been with anybody that knew Doug, that as many people knew Doug as that. I mean, everywhere I go, people come up to Doug. I've never been with anybody else that knows that many people and touches them, and they don't just know Doug, they like, "When are you coming to my daughter's birthday?" It's unbelievable how many people know this guy, but it's also incredible how many people love this guy. I love this guy, he is a great friend of mine, I have a ball with him, and I just wanna tell you, Lori, Val and I are coming on the 4th of July to the porcupine races, so we'll see ya on the 4th of July.
I didn't mean to stand in front of you. You stand over here, there you go. Doug, you know, we've done a lot of things together, a ton over the last, I don't know how many years, and I noticed my phone's not ringing at 2:00 in the morning anymore, though. And whenever it rang at 2:00, I knew it was Doug calling to say, "We gotta go do something, we gotta go out and get some trees out of the way, make sure power lines aren't laying on the road in places and stuff." We've done a lot of stuff together, it's been a blast. Doug was about one of the only people while I was at office that knew that I like getting my hands dirty, I like getting out there and doing stuff. We did a lot of things, we did the coastal cleanups every year, and we did the city of Clear Lake cleanup, which started out... Kathy's back there, she was really involved in that, and you know, that really turned into something huge for us to do every year, and the tons of garbage and stuff we picked up around the city was a real improvement. So, you're definitely gonna be missed, Doug, and you know, I don't know how we're gonna accomplish a lot of the things that you've done. accomplish a lot of the things that you've done, or anybody can even come close to do what you've done. So, you've been a great friend, a great person for the city, and I wish you well and hope to see you soon.
And this is two meetings in a row I've spoke. And most of you know I don't do that very much.
And the microphone moved.
Oh, see, I don't like that.
Aren't you short?
Especially next to Jeff. But Doug, I can say that when I got elected, I was scared of you. Straight up. Straight up. Who is that guy running around with hard hats all the time yelling and getting all upset and looks like his veins are popping out? Is he all right? So, I just kind of stayed away. Mm-hmm. I just kind of stayed away from everything, read everything you brought us, and did every... But then, then all of a sudden, we had to pull trees out of the creek over here with tow trucks. And then we had to lay out on trees as you cut them. And I thought, great, one of our employees is going to like fall in and die now. Get off there. And then Jeff's out there trying to do it. And I go, no, we got two of them out here. And then we're planting Christmas trees, right there in the park, just doing everything from Christmas trees to making the city a safer place. I want to thank you for the dedication that you've done. I won't talk about the tacos at about 2:00 in the morning.
Chuck Leonard, you know you wouldn't get away without me taking a final shot at you. But everybody thinks the city's going to miss you, but we don't have anywhere to go for the Super Bowl anymore, so... And going to Idaho, way too far. But everybody tells us little stories. I remember going camping with you and Lori. And in the morning, I wake up to drink my coffee, and your tent that you're in is down flat. And when I ask you what it is, you tell me some story about a pole that didn't work or something. I never saw damaged poles, so I had to make my own decision. So, the rest of you will have to do that, too. I know that you and Lori always had a thing when she'd watch you and see you on television. She'd text you if she was getting worried about you were getting too excited. So, you had a little signal. So, I know it was tugging the ears. So, this is for Lori, this is a two-year job. But I was on the council when we hired you, I mean, when we promoted you. And you've done a really exceptional job. I've done some really good decisions, and that certainly was one of them. And we will miss you. Thank you.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Keith with Golden State Water Company. First, I want to, he's a friend of mine as well. We go way, way back. And I'll never drink tequila out of a jar again. Thank you, Doug. So, I want to wish you happiness in retirement, but I also want to thank you for working with me to develop a cooperative working relationship that we have. And it took a while to establish. There's been a number of different people along the way. I don't recall ever interacting with city personnel. I've been, you know, working for a water company here in Clear Lake, the City of Clear Lake, for 30 years. And until you, there wasn't really a lot of interaction between the city and the local utilities. So, I hope your successor has your same mentality. I can, I'll vow to you that I will reach out to that person, whoever it is, and try to re-establish that kind of relationship. So, all the best to you, Doug.
Hi, Greg Folsom, citizen of Clear Lake. Doug, you've done such a great job. You are one of the things that I value extremely, to a great degree, in my employees, and that's work hard and get it done. And you've always worked hard. I mean, you're one of the hardest-working people I've ever been around. During the fires, he's out working 100-hour weeks. It's just, it's been phenomenal, what you do. I really appreciate that. He got grants for Eighteenth and Phillips, that road being redone. It's thanks to Doug and his crew, Addy as well, getting the grants for that. Dam road extension, that was, I think, probably the pinnacle of what you've done here, I would say. It's been something that I feel very proud of, having been accomplished during my tenure here. And Doug, again, you've been phenomenal. Thank you very much. I'm sorry that you're not going to be able to help Alan out the way I got your assistance, but Mike Baker is also phenomenal. Your entire staff is phenomenal. That's why we're able to get things done. So, thank you, Doug.
So, Doug, hey Lori, I've got some pictures for you. They're dirty. Actually, they're potholes. I've had fun photographing you and your crew during the Clear Lake cleanup, and I have lots of pictures that I'm going to share with the city and with you. And I just wanted to thank you for the privilege of watching someone do the Mel Gibson in Brave Heart talk to all the crew. I have several videos of that. He was so cute, and everyone said, wow, there he is, walking back and forth. And actually, he was on top of a truck and rousing the troops. Anyway, I'm going to miss you. Shine bright, sweetie. Namaste.
Hello, I'm Mike Baker. I'm Supervisor for the Public Works Crew. And we all have great stories about Doug. I've got a few. But I'm only going to give one. First time I met Doug, I applied for the position. Monday morning, it was before 7:00 a.m. My phone rings by the area code. I knew where it was from. Answer the phone. Hello, this is Mike, and I'm going to cut out some of the other language that was in the conversation, but... So, now, this is Doug. Yeah, can I speak to Mike? This is Mike. Are you for real? Excuse me? Are you for real? What are you talking about? Why would you want to leave and come up here and work up here? Why? I...huh? Long story short, Doug, thank you very much. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up here. Thank you for being a great mentor. I've learned a lot from you, and I appreciate it. And from what I've seen from the time I've been here, you have done a lot. And you know what? I don't care who they get. There's never going to be another Doug Haren. So, thank you.
Jesse Robertson, I work for Caltrans. I started with Caltrans about in 2001, same time as Doug, here in City of Crescent City. And I've seen a lot of City of Clear Lake staff come and go, and very few people have made as big of an impression on a community as I've seen Doug make. So, you know, I've heard him tell a lot of stories. If half the things he says are true, this man is a genius. Don't believe those. Okay, okay. But, you know, he's a great guy. He's, you know, he's inspired me with his dedication, and, you know, I'm proud and happy to call him my friend. So, congratulations on your retirement, Doug.
Hi, my name is Nicole Cook, and I'm with Citizens caring for Clear Lake. And we will miss you a lot. But we know you, you know, mentored some great people, Mike, and others, to help kind of follow your position. And I just want to say thank you very much for all you've done, and happy trails and good coffee.
Okay, want to move on to our next presentation? The two gentlemen from the VA clinic up here, please. How you doing, Mick Bennett?
Ray.
Greg? Earl Morehouse. This is Greg.
Ray.
Ray and Earl. Earl from the Clear Lake VA clinic up here. Before I do this presentation about Vietnam Veterans Day, are there any other Vietnam veterans in the audience? Stand up, Jim Comstock.
Welcome home, boys.
Welcome home.
I just want to get a couple of personal things out. Our military during the time of the Vietnam War was not very popular in that they were doing what they had taken an oath to do. They were following what, at the time, and it still made a difference in the world with the war of Vietnam. My father's a veteran of the Second World War, wounded on Okinawa. I had three uncles that went across the Pacific following the Marine Corps as Navy C.B.s when they were building or restoring landing strips that previously had been owned by or needed to be built by us, by the Japanese, and they did it under fire. My older brother is an Army veteran, was, he's passed now, as am I. And my son is a Navy veteran. Our military is, you know, the police have the thin blue line. Our military, all branches of the military are what keep us safe, our country safe, our borders safe, and are out there doing what many of us can't due to various reasons, but they are to be honored. I want to present this declaration for Vietnam Veterans Day. Whereas America is a symbol of freedom and has achieved its stature in the world because of the selfless service of our brave veterans. For those who fought in the Revolutionary War, to those currently serving in Iraq and Afghanistan, the fearless members of our country's armed forces have given up the comforts of home, the company of loved ones, and for some, even their own lives, so that we can live in our land of liberty. Whereas our Vietnam veterans fought for our freedom, kept America safe, and dedicated their lives to this nation, we are forever thankful for their unwavering strength and courage while fighting in the Vietnam War. We join together to express our gratitude and remember their service. Whereas on Vietnam Veterans Day, we honor the immeasurable sacrifices and contributions of our Vietnam War veterans have made to protect the life, liberty, and happiness of every American. All veterans deserve our deepest respect. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Clear Lake does hereby proclaim March 29th, 2019, as Vietnam Veterans Day, and urges every citizen to take time to honor our Vietnam veterans. May we always remember the heroism and courage of those who have served and those who continue to serve. Dated as 28th day of March, 2019, signed by me as mayor.
Yeah, my name's Earl Morehouse, and I am a Vietnam vet, as well as Ray. We both served at the same time. Not in the same company, but it was the same company. We were all soldiers. And for that, we want to say thank you to one and all for coming here tonight and sharing your love with us.
Thank you very much. There are three proclamations, one day each of these veterans, and one that will go to the VA clinic up here. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. Tonight, we have the unique opportunity to celebrate the retirement of one of our longtime dispatchers, Wendy England. Wendy has been with the department for a combined period of over 24 years, providing excellent public service to the community. Having been a former dispatcher, I realize the difficulty that exists in doing that job. We often think of the police officers and everything else as the first responders, but dispatchers are truly the first responders with answering 911 calls, juggling multiple things in this size of agency, and for much of her career, doing it by themselves, trying to manage, keep everybody happy, prioritize emergencies and everything else. I think that Wendy's had an incredible career. We're extremely sad to see her go, but she's definitely earned this. She made a difference. She made a lasting impression this last year. She had the opportunity to train some of our newest dispatchers, and I'm sure that the impression that she's left there will carry on. Our dispatch center is in the process of implementing and becoming a PSAP for Direct 911, which is a huge undertaking, and I certainly appreciate Wendy's support in that. And we want to present her with this plaque that's right here. So, this plaque says, Wendy England, Police Dispatcher, in recognition and sincere appreciation of your distinguished service, dedication, and friendship for 24 years to the police department and to the community.
You're not getting away, you're not getting away without me telling, saying something, but I promised I wouldn't tell any tales on the school. As I mentioned before in the last presentation, we see on media about the thin blue line, which is the officers out there on the street, but dispatchers are, as the chief said, the ones who take that initial call, make the determination, the type of response that's going to come. And I can tell you, I spent five decades as a law enforcement officer. And where I came from in the Bay Area was one of the toughest cities in the world to work in. And dispatchers have literally, literally saved my life by giving me the resources, by giving me cover, saved my officers' rear end when, you know, it was violent down there. And dispatchers, I never, ever let anybody get my dispatchers at that time. If they did, they'd answer to me and the biggest guy on my team. Wendy, Wendy's given me a lot of gray hairs. Not as many as Sully did. But she's a great dispatcher and a good trainer and a good mentor and role model for those who will come behind her. Thank you, Wendy. She told me I'd choke up. I didn't believe her. I think five minutes? I think five minutes, five-minute break, and then we need to set up for our next presentation. Thank you very much, all of you, for coming. I know many of you from the department have duties to perform, and from the city, thank you so much for attending.[616.04][616.04](noise)
Yeah, it'll be empty after this, except Ed Robey, because he, you know.[630.16][630.16](noise)
created the PEG TV Board of Directors requires that every year, by March first, we submit a budget to the two cities and the county, which I've already done, but I brought a copy along with me to do it again, and to submit a report, which is what I'm going to be doing. Both, I have a written version of it, but I'm basically going to talk and answer questions, if you have any. As a way of introduction, way back, oh geez, way back when I was in college, the Federal Communications Commission told, this is when cable television was just starting to come about, and I think it was Barry Goldwater that actually proposed this in Congress, but they told these cable companies that if they were going to be running their wires all over the place, in the public right of way and so forth, that they needed to provide a channel for public programming on television. It would be a nonprofit channel, and it wouldn't compete with the commercial channels, and it would provide the kind of programming that commercial channels wouldn't be providing. And they called it, the nickname was PEG, which stands for Public Education and Government. The government part of PEG is we broadcast the city council meetings and the Board of Supervisory Meetings, we broadcast candidates' forums and other events like that. The educational part of it, we used to broadcast college classes. We're not doing that presently, but hopefully we can get back to doing something like that again. We broadcast some educational programming, but we also do public programming, and that's the part that's, for me, the most interesting and the most challenging, because we are, we try to get local folks to learn how to create videos. It's not just, you know, like you take them with your smartphone, you have to be able to put titles on them and credits at the end, but to create videos of anything of local interest that we could broadcast. And I know Phil came to the PEG Board meeting one time and, with a buddy of his, and are you still working on that project?
They were supposed to move forward with it and have it, so I'm not sure where that's going to end up.
Okay, well, they were going to go around to different businesses and record what they do. You know, we're non-commercial, but that doesn't mean we can't broadcast shows about what's going on. You know, we just don't run ads. So, anyway, we have a Board of Directors made up of a member from each of the two cities and the county, and a public member who we, who's actually a city person. I'm the county member. Mayor Bennett is the member from the city of Clear Lake. Mariah Turner, who is a city councilwoman in Lakeport, she was their mayor last year, she's the Lakeport member. County Superintendent of Schools Brock Falkenberg is the education member, and then Amy Hammack, who grew up here, went away and became an engineer, and now she's back, and she's a great addition to the PEG Board. Back in February, the PEG Board approved our budget for the upcoming fiscal year, and our budget is kind of an interesting one. For those of you who don't know this, we have two budgets, and they have to be kept separately. We have what they call the operating budget and the capital budget, because we get our revenue from different sources. The capital budget is funded by a 1 percent, they call it a pass-through, but basically everybody that's got cable from MediaCom, 1 percent of what they pay for their cable fee comes to the PEG station, and we can use that for capital costs, which means primarily equipment. We can't spend it for salaries or operating costs. And so with our operating, I mean, excuse me, with our capital budget, we've been doing projects such as equipping City Hall here with these cameras. And we've also improved our broadcast equipment, so that now we're able to stream live on the Internet. This meeting is being streamed live as we speak, which is why Laurie could see it in Idaho. Anyway, our operating budget projects revenues of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, that's the operating budget, and expenses at twenty-eight thousand two hundred. The revenues include six thousand from underwriters, which is a revenue source that we don't really have yet, but we're going to start seeking this year. We're in the middle of a major equipment upgrade, and as soon as we get that done, we're going to go around to some of the local businesses and see if they would like to underwrite a show. Now, underwriters don't get to run ads, but you've seen underwriting on KQED, for example, where they'll say, "Masterpiece Theater is proudly brought to you by whoever it is, Viking River Tours." Anyway, so it gives some exposure to the local businesses, but you're not running ads saying, "Come down and buy this or that." Anyway, we can legally do that, and we're going to try to get some underwriters. The capital budget this year projects revenues of fifty-eight thousand two hundred dollars and expenses of twenty-seven thousand, which means we're saving up some money. Now, when we originally started getting this revenue, I would like to know that our income was higher, it was closer to seventy thousand dollars a year, but because of all of the commerc, all the residential properties lost in the fires countywide, I mean, those people aren't watching cable anymore. And so, just like the county government is suffering from lack of property taxes, the PEG station's suffering a little bit too. That's okay. We were able to save up in the first few years, and so we're doing projects. We did Clear Lake City Hall here with cameras and broadcast equipment, that cost about twenty thousand bucks. We, this year, are spending another twenty thousand dollars upgrading the cameras and broadcast equipment at the Board of Supervisors' chambers at the courthouse in Lakeport. Those, I don't know if you've taken a good look at those cameras, but those things are, they've probably been here longer than Doug Heron has been here.
And that's old.
And then, we're going to be doing the city of Lakeport, City Council Chambers also, next. We, like I said, we're doing, this year, we're spending a lot of money on equipment, doing major upgrades, trying to get everything so that we can, right now, we're not able to broadcast in high-def for a number of reasons, but that's primarily, has to do with MediaCom. But, we want to be able to broadcast in high-def, because that's what every, all the TVs are going to, but also, as we do more and more of the streaming on the Internet, that's, we want that to be in high-def. So, we're trying to get all the equipment upgraded to that, to that standard. We also have some other projects that we're working on, I'd like to mention. One is what we call Oral History Project, which we're doing with the Lake County Museum. We're going to be videoing old timers telling stories about when, what Lake County was like when they were young, or what they learned from their parents or their grandparents. But there's another project that we're just now, we're at the talking stage, but it's exciting to me, and that is, we've been talking to the county librarian, Christopher Veach, about purchasing cameras and computers with video editing software in them for the libraries. So there'd be equipment here in Clear Lake, there'd be at the Middletown Library and the one in Lakeport, where people who wanted to create videos could go and check out the equipment and do it. And we would also hope to have classes to teach people how to use the cameras and the video editing software. It's not complicated, editing software, but at least you have to be able to put a title on the thing and, and credits at the end, and make sure that the scenes transition smoothly. You look like you have a question, Phil?
No, no.
No?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, basically, that's it. We're, we've got a good board, we've got a stable source of money. We don't really have enough money in the operating budget to fund a full-time staff person, but we're getting by. And hopefully, as our, our broadcast quality and our programming improves, we'll be able to get more interest in underwriters and so forth for the station. So, with that, any questions?
Just one comment, you mentioned revenue through MediaCom. If those of you in the audience, the viewing audience, has a MediaCom, if you look on your bill, it would show 1 percent of your bill.
Right, in other words, if you were paying MediaCom fifty bucks, you'd be giving fifty cents to the PEG station.
Now, that doesn't work with DirecTV or Dish.
No.
Because they're not cable.
No.
But they're satellite, but just for those who may wonder how that works.
Right, and of course, MediaCom provides Internet services.
Yes.
Over their cable, so they don't have an issue with us streaming on the Internet, because their subscribers, Internet subscribers will be able to use that.
And we work closely with the MediaCom manager up here.
Right, yes, Sean Swatash, great guy.
So, okay, so we started a studio at the community center down there, we have, there's a room down there.
Right.
And you're saying that you're going to, you're looking to put this equipment in at the library, which, I'm assuming this equipment isn't, you know, extremely expensive, but, you know, what happens if there's damage, if they do damage, is there going to be a deposit that they're going to have to put up? Or you're just going to kind of hope that everybody kind of...
We haven't worked out the details yet, I'm not sure. I know there'll have to be some kind of training, or before the person would be authorized to check the equipment out, they'd need to know how to use it.
So is that something that may be the studio you'd use to have people meet there, train them on how to use the equipment, and then they'd be able to rent it at the library?
Right.
Okay, so, and what's your anticipation, I know we didn't get to talk a lot before the meeting, but your anticipation on actually having that studio open to be used at, that's at the community center?
Yeah, I didn't mention that, but the city, the city of Clear Lake provides us their share of the revenue in our budget as in-kind revenue. The city doesn't provide us with cash, but they give us a space here at City Hall for the broadcast equipment, and they also have given us a room out at the community center, which we're, which we're going to use as a studio for creating shows and for training classes. And that's what Joyce and I were talking about earlier, was getting some equipment out there that's a little better than we've got already. Right now, we're using, you know, cameras on tripods, and it'd be nice if we had, you know, maybe some of these. But there's a lot of possibilities out there, but right now, see, we're kind of in this transitional period where we're upgrading the equipment and we're not really doing much out there at the present time, but we will be as soon as the, as soon as we get the rest of our gear. We spent a bunch of money on gear, and it's sitting in there. It's, some of it's installed and some of it is waiting to be installed.
Maybe we can do a future gen item, and have either you or the station manager come in and give us an update on the equipment and...
Sure.
What our progress is maybe in, say, four months.
Sure.
Yeah, that was my question is, is, what's your anticipation on what you're doing right now? How long do you think it's going to be?
Well, I used to try to anticipate things, but since nothing ever happens as fast as I think it's going to.
It's hard to...
I've kind of given up trying to estimate and just try to keep pushing things.
I, I think people need to realize too, that, you know, like you said, we pay somebody just part-time, very little, and that most of this is done by volunteer hours, and so as volunteers are, they can't always just dedicate their time to get something completely done at one time. So, I do want to say that I do appreciate everybody that volunteers for the PEG station.
Yeah.
Because that's a tremendous effort, and so anybody that wants to volunteer, they need to come in and talk to John probably, right?
But just, I just want to say, if anybody's watching this and thinks they might want to make some videos, get in touch with the station and let us know, because that's what we would really like, is local programming, and it doesn't have to be anything stupendous. If you want to video your grandson's soccer game, that would be cool to show on the, on the station, you know? I was speaking with, who was it? Someone involved with the athletic programs down in Middletown, and they were telling me that nowadays, the schools are all videoing their games so that the players can study their moves and stuff, and that we might be able to get ahold of those videos and just add the credits and the titles to them, and away we go, so.
How would they get ahold of the PEG station manager?
Right now, call the city of Clear Lake and leave a message.
What's the PEG station extension?
I don't know.
One oh nine.
Okay. Nine nine four eight two zero six.
Extension one oh nine.
Extension one oh nine. Eight two zero six, huh? Okay.
Eight two, eight two oh two, eight two oh one, eight two oh four. There's a bunch of...
Call eight two zero one, and it'll work.
Quick question, Ed. Satellite, is that a big impact on the amount of people that can, you know, it's not only the, be able to pay you some money, but actually to view the channels, PEG channel?
I'm sure that satellite's having an impact on MediaCom, but, and there are people like myself who live out, outside, I mean, I live, I don't live out in the middle of nowhere, but I, where I live, there's telephone and electricity, but there's no cable TV, because it's a very rural area, so I have, I have a satellite dish. The thing is, I can watch it on the Internet now, now that we're streaming. So, that's why this whole thing about streaming on the Internet is important, because we expand our viewership that way.
You don't live out in the middle of nowhere? I always thought you did.
Well, I used to, but now things have grown, and it's traffic.
Any rate, you had mentioned the history project. I know there's a couple of us sitting here that were the guinea pigs for that. What is actually going on with, with those early videos? Or I heard that there were some problems with them, so you're going to redo them, or...
Yeah, that's what I heard too, but I don't know exactly where it's at.
Yeah.
I can let you know.
That's, history is something, I, of Lake County is something I'm especially...
Right.
Obviously interested in, I think a lot of folks would be interested in.
Right, and I know some people around here that know a lot of history and have a lot of family history.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I think, two people sitting up here were interviewed based on that, and like I said, I think that's a great project, and I'd love to see it go forward, and soon.
Yeah. I'll find out, Russ, I'll let, I'll give you an update.
All right.
So, thank you so much for the presentation today, but you and I had a discussion about potentially an interactive portal to allow for the uploading of homemade video content, and I was going to ask you about that, if there's been any progress made with the website and...
Actually, we, it is on our to-do list. When we get this, part of the equipment that we purchased was some very large-capacity hard drives, and what we're going to set up, right now, we're, it's almost embarrassing to say this, we're so primitive. If somebody creates a video, they put it on a DVD and come down here and slide it under the door. What Phil's talking about is that we will, on our website, we will have a portal where people who create videos can transmit them over the Internet and just drop them into our hard drives, and it'll be a protected area, but that way, we can go in there and, and we have to review them to make sure that they're brought, you know, you can see and hear, it's a minimum standards.
Or it's acceptable to put on.
Yeah, and that it's, you know, it's got to be legal, there's certain things we can't show, but mostly, we can show anything.
Well, and then, one of the other things we discussed is maybe a potentially interactive app on your phone, that sort of thing. And the reason why these things were brought up, obviously, is that most people won't take the time to go through and utilize the equipment, even if you have it free for them to access the library. They're going to use their cellphone, or they're going to use whatever device they have on them to record content, and then just making that uploading process as seamless as possible is going to get us the content, the local content we need, and I really, like we've talked about in depth, that's where you're going to get viewership, is when people can see their friends and neighbors and things locally on a regular basis being uploaded. It's going to draw their attention, they'll tell people about it, and they'll say, "Hey, you got to see my video."
Like I, like I said, right now, we're trying to build the foundation, the infrastructure for the station. Once we get that done, then we can start implementing things like this. I don't know of an app that exactly does what we've talked about.
Yeah, maybe, maybe a very basic formulation. These days, a lot of youth can actually build an app. They learn that process in school, so some of these projects they do, they can actually build little applications, so might be something to bring the youth in on the fold.
Right, I'll talk to Brock about that since...
Whatever makes it as seamless as possible, I think is where you're going to get your content, because the less effort somebody has to put in...
Right.
...uploading the video.
That's what we want to do, is make it as simple and easy as possible.
All right, and the nice part is, our, our cellphones these days are capable of HD. I mean, we're talking about really high-quality video, you know, right there.
I know, yeah, the cameras on them are amazing.
Yeah, so thank you so much for the efforts you've put in on this and our report tonight.
It's your thing. I'm probably going to be retiring from the PEG station here one of these days, but...
I heard that ten years ago. What are you talking about? You're as bad as I am, you ain't never going to retire.
You can go when the last of us goes.
Thank you, Ed, thank you very much. And now to the Netherlands out to nowhere. Okay, it's time for public comment. Any member of the public to address City Council on any matter not on the agenda that was in the, within the subject matter jurisdictions in the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment, so your comments, okay, do we have anybody? Sure, come on up.
I forgot. Hi, everybody, I'm Rita.
I'm Greg.
Jean, and we're up here to talk about the ad hoc committee, and we wanted to know when we could put it on the agenda so we could come and talk about it, and when it's going to be on, you know, if you're going to put it back on, so we could have meetings again, and we could... Can you hear me all right?
You can maybe pull it towards you.
I'm just a little short, okay? But we'd like to get it started again, because it's really important, and we were talking about it with this wonderful guy here. Hi there. So, we'd like to know when we could have it put on. And Nick, I'm happy to see you as mayor. So, do you think we could have it put on soon?
If I could just, Mr. Mayor, so I talked to Rita during the reception, and, you know, we haven't had an ad hoc committee meeting for a while, and I told her that I'd get with Chief White, and felt like we could probably have one again sometime in April. Chief and I were actually talking about it just this morning, so just want the council to know that we'd like to re-engage with the ad hoc.
Well, make it, it is happening then, yes.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate this, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that fast enough for you, Rita?
I think it was fast enough, thank you.
Any other comment? Mr. Folsom?
So you people...
Hope Bill's watching.
...need to join me in wishing Alan Flora a happy birthday.
Happy birthday!
Thank you.
Still very young, though.
Any further public comment? Okay, we do have one, we have to wait for the...
About a year old. We got him February tenth from the baseball field. Really good with kids, he was just back there sitting with the chief's daughter, very full of energy. He's neutered already, he's up to date on his vaccines. He's available for adoption. He's available for adoption, or we also have the foster-to-adopt program we're doing. You can, he can go home and try him out and see if you have a dog that he gets along with. Gonna need a lot of exercise, because he's, he's very energetic.
Looks like a good dog for the Mike Baker Goat Farm.
Oh, no.
So what do I need to, or what would someone need to do to adopt?
So they can come down to the shelter and meet with Charmaine and go through the adoption process, or it's also, I think it's possible online through our website. I have to double check to make sure that that's available.
So the public could give the animal shelter a call, or visit the website and get more information on adopting any of the animals that are available?
Do we have the number for the website, or for the phone number for the shelter?
The call number for the shelter is, help me have to, it's on Charmaine's business card I got right here. It's brand new for us, so I don't have it memorized yet. It's 273-9440.
It's 273-9440, and there's no extension to that?
Nope.
So if you're interested in adopting this dog, or any of the other dogs at the shelter, give them a call at that number? What's this dog's name? Buck. That was my first, my first dog's name.
It'd probably be a good elk cutting dog, Doug.
I was just gonna say, hey, Doug, there's your going-away present. Take the dog with you.
Any other public comment? Lieutenant Hobbs.
Good evening, council members. Lieutenant Tim Hobbs, Clear Lake Police Department. I just wanted to give you a update on some of the statistics for animal care and control so far this year. There'll be a report future, in the future, but just wanted to give you an update on what we have through the beginning of the year, or at this point in the year. So far, we've taken approximately 112 dogs into the shelter. 65 of those dogs have been, gone to rescues. 27 have been returned to their owners. 10 were adopted. 8 are currently in foster to adopt, and 7 were euthanized. So of the 112, 6.2% were euthanized, which results in roughly an approximate live release rate of almost 94%, which is, which is extremely good. We've been improving on these numbers over the last couple of years, and it's, you know, for the start, first quarter of this year is pretty low, so everything is, is looking good at this point. Hopefully, we can keep it low. Obviously, that's a really low number. It might not end up that way, but if we can improve from, you know, last year and keep getting better and get more animals adopted into rescue, I think it's a very good thing for the city.
Also been quite a few improvements there at the shelter, too, to...
Yes. Yep, well, a lot of improvements. Last year, we had the new AC heater system put in by a local business, Performance Mechanical. We had a lighting upgrade, so things are definitely improving there, and hopefully we'll get some more improvements in the future.
Has there been some additions of the, the, or changes to the, the actual housing of the animals, the boxes, the kennels, excuse me?
Not since last year, no.
Okay, and that's on the forefront, there's some, something being looked at for that, right?
Yes, there's some things in the works on getting new arrangements for the animals. Yes.
Quick question.
Oh, yes.
Any cats? Is there some statistics on that, or?
I can...
Do you take in cats?
We did. I don't have all the numbers on cats, but roughly 20 cats came in, and euthanasia on the cats, I wanna say, is four.
All right, thank you.
I don't have the whole breakdown on all the cats with me, though.
I think it's important for the public to know that with all the improvements there are to the animal control and the facilities we're developing and everything, when we took this over from the county back in, what, 2000?
15.
No, it was before that. Yeah. Yeah, when we first took it over, we, we were housing them down into public works, and next to nothing, we did not have staffing for it, we did not have funding for it, we were forced into a situation where we really were running by the seat of our pants. I know Lee Lambert, I was supposedly in charge of it, but Lee Lambert was doing the work on it, and he worked his tail off. A lot of it, all by himself, with a couple of volunteers. We have come leaps and bounds from then to where I, I wouldn't wanna put a dog, I hated down there at that time. But now we've, we've come a long way, and I think the department is to be commended for it. Even since I left, almost three and a half years ago, improvements have come about. Chief White has a background in animal control, which is extremely helpful, because none of us had that background, none of us. So the department is to be commended on that.
And we've, I know we've added to the staff, but I think we're still, if people would like to volunteer, that's, you're still accepting volunteers?
Yes, we're always looking for volunteers, especially in the animal control area. We have lots of VIPs, volunteers at the police department. However, we only have one volunteer currently that, that works at animal control, so we're, we're always looking for them, for people that are willing to help do various things there, whether it's walk animals, play with animals, clean animals' cages, feed the animals. That's definitely an area where we need some, some volunteer time.
If they have complaints, that they ought to come down and volunteer and help.
I agree.
Thanks, Jim.
Any particular minimum requirement for volunteering?
The volunteering, they have to basically pass a finger, they have to get live-scanned, fingerprinted, make sure they don't have any criminal things that would prohibit them, have a driver's license, and that, that's about it.
Pretty basic criteria.
Basic, yes. Yes.
So why would they have to have a driver's license? Just out of curiosity, because there are people who, basically, with some of the company developmentally disabled, that would be very good with the animals, but they don't drive.
Oh, generally, our volunteers drive, or potentially drive vehicles. There could be an arrangement where if they're not gonna drive a vehicle, they, they wouldn't need a driver's license, but generally, our, our volunteers, whether at animal control, if they have to transport an animal to a rescue, places like that, that's...
But if somebody just wanted to come in and walk the dogs? I just know a few that want to do this, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, no, that's, that's potentially not an issue, yeah.
Because there are some of them that just wanna come in and walk the dogs.
Yeah, if the duties are gonna be limited, something like that, I don't, I don't see why that would be an issue.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Anything further?
Thank you so much for that.
If I could just add, if I could just add on briefly, I mean, you know, what Mayor Bennett mentioned, you know, we've made a lot of progress. There's still a lot of work to do and a lot of improvements that need to be made, and the staff should be commended for continuing to do a lot with very little down there. And I think the, there may be rumors out there in the community, but the statistics speak for themselves, and what's considered a no-kill shelter in, in the animal care community is a 90% live-release rate or higher, and the shelter currently this year is working at around 94%, significantly higher than what the county shelter currently is operating at. So the staff really need to be commended for doing a great job with very little, and, you know, I'm proud of the work that they're doing.
Excellent, great job.
Definitely, and there are some animals that are gonna be euthanized. Their, due their viciousness, their inability to be adopted or whatever, that's just a fact of life, and it needs to be accepted. So I, I think, very commendable. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Any other further public comment? Okay, let's go with consent agenda, any changes other than we removed item 7? Well, we devolved to the adoption agenda, okay.
Did we approve?
Yeah, we did.
We did, yes, I did.
I think it was back password, but that's okay.
Just been a while.
Okay, let's move on to business, which would be item 10.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. It was before...
We did it before we did any of that.
Well, actually, what we did before was the, was the adoption of the agenda, which we removed item 6. So now we need to approve the consent agenda.
I think to be clear, we should, in case it wasn't clear to anybody in the audience, we should go ahead and adopt.
So when we adopted the agenda, the modification was to remove item 6 from the consent agenda. That, having been done, is there any other items on the consent agenda that needs to be changed, modified, deleted? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve item 7 through 9 on the consent agenda?
Sure.
Motion and two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's move on to item number 10, business item, which is award of construction...
Consideration agreement with Lake County Tourism.
Consideration of agreement with the Lake County Tourism Improvement District for Administrative Services related to the collection of assessments from lodging establishment within the city, Clear Lake. Mr. Flora.
Mr. Mayor, we can, we can certainly take that one up, but does your agenda reflect the number 9, the construction contract for Burns Valley?
The number is screwed up.
I think that some of our members...
Yeah, but the numbering is skewed on ours.
Yep.
Okay, so number 9, which is consideration of adoption of the facilities, maintenance 1 and 2 positions, resolution number 2019-11.
I think something's wrong with your agenda. This is authorized city manager to enter in a contract granted construction? I have it. Should be...
I know, we messed up.
Okay.
Should be a subject award, award of construction contract.
So let's try it one more time, with the new thing here. Award of construction contract for the Burns Valley Civic Center Enhancement Project. Mr. Flora.
Yeah, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Heron.
You still there?
I'm still here.
I don't know why we wanna give him the mic again, but...
So anyways, this is the third project of the season, and Mike and Marissa and Adeline are gonna present it. They're, they're all learning how to go through the process, so Mike's gonna take the helm tonight and walk you through this one.
Award of construction contract for the Burns Valley Civic Center Enhancement Project. Background for the project is, the present location for the project has either no facilities or substandard facilities for proper pedestrian and bicycle travel. The project will provide pedestrian improvements by including high-visibility crosswalks, retro reflective signs and striping, rapid flashing beacons, and other pedestrian bicyclist improvements. The project will include the addition of sidewalks and a bike route along Olympic Drive from Pine Street to Lake Shore Drive, and extend around the corner along the east side of Lake Shore Drive, from Olympic Drive to the end of the city hall property. The city advertised a notice inviting bids, bids for the Burns Valley Civic Center Enhancement Project on February 15th, 2019. The project was advertised on the city website, advertised in the newspapers, and sent to various builders' exchange plan rooms. The city opened bids on March 21st, 2019, from the following contractor, Granite Construction, in the amount of $549,136,000. Staff recommends that the city council approve and direct the city manager to enter into a contract with Granite Construction in the amount of $549,136,000, and authorize the city manager to approve of up to 10% for additional unforeseen contract amendments. There are no policy implications with this recommendation. Funding for this project is available using the SB 1 Local Partner Program funds for $200,000. And today, we realized that the Series A bond funds has $320,000 allocated, and we would need an additional $30,000 for the project, and we, we recommend it come from the gas tax fund. The Burns Valley Civic Center Enhancement Project is an important project in helping to implement strategic plan goal number three: Improve the quality of life in the city of Clear Lake with improved public facilities.
You think from council?
Yeah. Yeah. Is undergrounding a part of this project, too? It's not? PG&E wasn't interested in?
To do any underground with PG&E, it's, it's any worse for a month.
Thanks, Greg. Yeah, the underground projects, I, I talked to PG&E and it was any worse for a year to two years out, and we don't wanna wait that long. As the city moves forward, and we're, we're asking people to put curb gunner sidewalk in front of their facilities, we need to, we need to set an example ourselves.
Right. I, I like to see it, but somehow or another, I wish we would have PG&E able to do that. Is there any way we can force them to do that, or do it quicker?
No. No. Nice thing about this is our, our road width is, is pretty wide out there, so we're not actually getting in, we're not buying any right-of-way. We have plenty of right-of-way, so if they do an underground project, it's not gonna impact our, our, our current project.
I thought I saw them move a, one of the power poles right in the corner over here someplace. Is that in anticipation of this project?
Correct.
You only have the one bid. How did that compare to the engineer's estimate of the project cost?
The engineer's estimate cost was $550,000.
$550?
Yes, sir.
This came in at $549,136.
Yes, sir.
That's a pretty, pretty close estimate. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
That was real close.
So I see here that rapid flashing beacons and the crosswalks, and where are those located, gonna be located?
On Lake Shore?
Uh, right, right here at the, the intersection?
So the rapid flashing beacons will be located at Olympic and Pine.
Okay, and will there be some down here at the intersection of Lake Shore and Olympic?
No.
I assume not with this one?
Here? Okay, yeah, we added that. I didn't know, we added that. We're looking at doing a roundabout project there.
So there will be some there, and there will be some there. And will there also be any provisions made for, for lighting, for additional streetlights or anything of that sort?
Not underneath this contract.
Okay, and is there a possibility that, I assume that PG&E was gonna be doing the thing, kinda like Councilmember Sluton had said, is there a possibility that we could incorporate into the groundwork that's being done, any kind of conduits and vaults, so that they, when the, when the future happens, we can just have them pull line? Would it be a possibility for us to kinda like have a forethought there and drop some infrastructure into the ground as we're doing this, to make it easier for them to put everything underground, or is that not a possibility?
No, that's, that's possible. I mean, me and Greg have met with, with their, with their people many times, Lizette Burris, Lizette Burris, and we've talked about future projects. It's just they're out there ways, in lieu of all these, these fires and floods and stuff that's going on, everybody's two, three, four years behind right now.
Well, in this particular instance, they would not have to have a participation level, but it would just be as, as simple as us kind of having some forethought as to where we know that they would have to string lines, and then putting the infrastructure in the ground, just in preparation for that, knowing that within two to four years, for example, we're going to be, be trying to get everything underground, it would just, it would just concern me to do all this work and then potentially have to kinda tear into it to...
Yeah, that's, that's what I was saying, that we have, our road width on this, on this Olympic Drive, we have enough road width, so if they do any undergrounding from Pine Street back out to this intersection, it's gonna be inside of our project.
Well, I assume there's some...
It won't be in our project at all.
Probably be some lateral stuff, though, stuff coming into our property.
No, 'cause everything comes down this way, it's gonna run this direction.
So it wouldn't tie into our, wouldn't go across our crosswalks, wouldn't go, okay, that would be my only concern, is that anything that would potentially lateral across the work that we're having done, it would be advantageous to put something in?
They got a lot of new technology out there, so there's a lot of people are doing line boring, so they're going down underneath and, and are boring across without trying to tear up asphalt and, and stuff, so that's kinda the new future wave coming down.
Well, I very much appreciate this, it's exciting. Well, I, I very much appreciate this. It's exciting. See this out. Thanks.
Yes. Anything further? Uh, any public comment?
One, one quick question.
Oh, one more.
One, one quick comment. Uh, it, it's right that we're doing this to City Hall, 'cause City Hall is probably not ADA compliant now, at least the curb gutter around and not direct travel way to City Hall, so it's important that we set an example.
Yes. Public comment, Cheryl?
Cheryl Alman, City of Clear Lake. I have to, uh, define my ignorance, but I had some, a family trying to cross from that Burns Valley Ball Mall, or Burns Valley School, across Olympic. Is that Pine Street there? Okay, 'cause they, there was no crosswalk. I was surprised when I actually saw them, and I was too far or too close to them to stop, but, um, I thought that was really unsafe, so I'm glad to see this then, to be going in. And is that where one of the flashing lights is gonna be, at the school?
Yes. Good comment. Thank you. Anything further from public? Bring it back to, uh, council.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to authorize, uh, move that we authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Granite Construction for construction of the Burns Valley Civic Center Enhancement Project in the amount of five hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager to approve up to ten percent for additional unforeseen contract amendments.
Motion and a second. Do we need a roll call on this? We don't? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass. Now, I'm back from line with my, now we're the consideration of agreement with Lake County Tourism Improvement District for administrative services related to the collection of assessments from lodging establishments within the city of Clear Lake. Mr. Flora.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so, um, as you're already aware, in twenty eighteen, Lake County Lodging Operators established a Tourism Improvement District. Um, this is one of over a hundred and five other tourism improvement districts in California, and the idea is to provide dedicated funds for destination, marketing, um, and expanding tourism efforts within Lake County. So, this is, this has been explained to the council before, but this is the formal agreement that outlines the city's responsibility to collect the one and a half percent assessment that was approved. So this assessment is on gross room rental revenues from the lodging operators that are within the city, um, and this is in addition to the transient occupancy tax revenue that the city receives. Um, so we collect those payments and then remit that amount, um, to the Tourism Improvement District. This is the same agreement that the city of Lakeport and the county of Lake have with the, um, with the TID. The city is permitted to retain two percent of the one and a half percent assessment to cover administrative costs for, um, you know, collecting the amounts, um, and remitting the assessment to the TID. So, uh, we provided an update to the council on January tenth about, um, initiating this and provided the revised TOT and, um, TID assessment form, um, but this is the formal agreement before you tonight that, um, you know, outlines the process. And so, uh, the agreement was drafted by the county. Um, the only difference is just references between the county and the city in this agreement. Um, and, um, we had a TID meeting earlier this week, which, um, this agreement was signed by the, the board members of the TID, and, uh, our recommendation is that the, the council approve this.
Anything from the council? Any public comment? I'll bring it back to council.
One, one quick question. It, uh, since outgoing city manager was a member of that, I assume that you're gonna take the spot?
Yeah, I was appointed to the board, um, after city manager Folsom's resignation. I guess it was probably about two weeks ago, um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm officially on the board now.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any other questions. If not, I move that we approve the agreement with Lake County Tourist Improvement District for administrative services and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Okay. Number eleven, first reading of ordinance to amend subdivision three dash four point five, parentheses eight, parentheses eight, of the Clear Lake Municipal Code, exceptions to competitive bidding requirements. Which floor?
Mr. Mayor, actually, I'm gonna take this and members of the council. So what we're looking to do is hold the first reading of a, I would consider a minor amendment to the purchasing, um, ordinance that we have in our municipal, municipal code. It's particularly section three dash four point five A eight, and what we currently have is the ability for the city to purchase goods through what's called a CMAS or the TIPS programs. Those are programs where they've already competitively bidded certain rates for these items, and we can buy them from them as opposed to having to go through a whole competitive bidding process. It's turned out in our experience in talking to Mr. Flora that there are other similar programs besides CMAS and TIPS that we'd like to take advantage of. And so what we did is we were proposing to, to build in some flexibility in our purchasing code to use other programs to purchase goods from. This would, if, obviously if we have a public works project, like the construction, you know, of, of a road or something, you can't use this type of thing. You gotta go through regular competitive bidding programs. But we think this is a good way to build in some flexibility and be more efficient with our spending while still getting a competitive price for the city. And I would recommend that we, uh, hold the first reading here now and, and move it for second reading at the next regular council meeting. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Is this, uh, one question in particular. Is this, uh, amending this ordinance, is that still help our local, uh, our local people?
It really has no impact on that. That, that is, we still have a local preference. I would say this doesn't really one way or another impact. Our local bidders could be a part of one of these programs, or they may not be.
Okay.
So if I could just add a recent example, um, when we, when the council recently authorized purchase of the, um, asphalt equipment a few meetings ago, um, they offered a government lease program that we could have utilized to, to lease that equipment like we've done with some other things. But to enter into a government lease, you had to participate in one of these purchasing cooperatives, and there was one specific one that this firm worked with. Um, you know, we just went ahead and purchased the equipment, 'cause we had the funding available, but that's just an example of a way to have more flexibility in purchasing some goods and services that we think would be helpful to have a little bit of wiggle room in, in our ordinance.
Anything further? Open it to public comment? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, hold first reading ordinance number two oh, or two-two-seven, uh, dash two oh one nine, in order in submitting subdivision three dash four point five, um, A eight of the Clear Lake Municipal Code, providing an exception to competitive bidding requirements for goods and services obtained under the cooperative purchasing agreement and the program of another, of another government agency.
Second.
Read by title only. Do we need to read the title? Go ahead with it, or no?
Yes, please.
Didn't he just read the title?
I think you just read it.
Yeah, I already read it. Okay, it's all put together.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. So we go on to twelve, consideration of a resolution certifying appointment of a finance director is necessary to fill a critically needed position, requesting an exception from CalPERS to the one hundred and eighty-day wait period and authorizing the city manager to appoint Jill Martin as finance director, resolution number twenty nineteen dash fifteen. Mr. Flora.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so as you're aware, we have a recent, uh, finance director vacancy. Um, and so, uh, while we're currently recruiting for public works director, it's, um, I don't believe in the best interest of the city to also be recruiting for another, um, department head level position. So I was able to identify, uh, Ms. Martin, who, um, I have a history of working with previously and has, um, adequate experience as finance director, um, and the willingness to come and help the city in this role. Uh, however, as a recent retiree, um, there's some complications with her suspending her retirement, um, and the length of time that she, that CalPERS would require her to continue working, um, which is at least three and a half years. And so what we're recommending now, um, she's willing to work, um, essentially as a retired annua, up to nine hundred and sixty hours per fiscal year, um, in the interim. And so, uh, to do that, uh, CalPERS requires that the legislative body certify that this is a critically needed position and, um, an exception, 'cause, 'cause, um, standard policy from CalPERS is that once you retire, um, you're not allowed to work for another public agency for six months from that retirement date. Um, kind of a, a cooling off or waiting period. And, um, but if you determine that there's a, a critical need for this, um, coming into our, our budget season, and because of the vacancy we have, you can, um, certify that. We'll pass that information on to CalPERS and hopefully wait on their, um, wait a very short period of time on their decision that it's okay, uh, for Ms. Martin to fulfill that position. So, we would be able to employ, employ her as a non-benefitted, essentially, um, extra help position for, um, up to nine hundred and sixty hours this fiscal year and then up to nine hundred and sixty hours next fiscal year. Um, so the goal would be to kinda get us through the budget season, um, get our new public works director in place, and then move forward, um, more actively with, uh, a permanent finance director, uh, replacement. So, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel? Any, uh, comment or question from the, uh, public? Okay, then I'll bring it back to, uh, council for adoption.
Motion to adopt resolution and authorize the city manager to appoint Ms. Martin as the, uh, finance director upon approval from CalPERS.
Have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed.
That's the end of the agenda.
Okay. So we go on to, that's it? City manager report?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a few items. So I mentioned earlier that, uh, attended, uh, Tourism Improvement District Board meeting in Lakeport on Tuesday. Um, we also had a meeting here, uh, regarding the Shakespeare in the Park event that will be happening the first weekend in August, um, of the lakeside here near Austin Park. Um, so we're assisting with them and excited about that event. Um, details are coming together to hold a spay and neuter clinic at the senior community center on May fifth. Um, so we're working the details out on that, but it looks like that's all to go at this point. And we're also spending some time planning for Bring Your Kids to Work Day, um, on April twenty-fifth, which is right around the corner, and we have some fun activities planned for the kids. Looking forward to that. Um, so we're nearly complete on our Open Gov Budget Builder implementation, which is how we're gonna be building our budget this year. Um, it's taken us a little bit longer than, than anticipated initially. We're about a week behind schedule. Um, expecting staff training on the system, um, will be next week, and then departments will be submitting their budget requests, um, through the first couple of weeks of April, um, and you need to work through the process to bring, uh, proposed budget to the council, um, in early June. We held, uh, interviews for our office assistant position this week. The position was offered to the top candidate, and hopefully will be starting in the next couple of weeks. Our independent auditors were here last week completing their final work. Um, so we went out and, uh, brought some new auditors on board this year. Um, it's, it'd been quite a few years and, uh, just thought it was time to have a fresh set of eyes on things. It's taken them a bit longer than normal to complete our audit and financial statements, which is a little bit frustrating, but, um, there's been quite a bit of additional work due to some previous closeout procedures that needed to be updated. Um, we should be getting our, uh, draft, um, report next week, but there's gonna be, um, there's no significant findings, any, um, issues like that. Just appeared that there was, um, some lack of follow-through on certain adjustments in previous years, and there's a need for us to have a better closeout process. So they're going to come back, um, and do a little bit of training from our, some of our finance staff. I, I, I realized in my time here that there was a lot of things that, um, our finance folks, uh, didn't really understand the process. They were just like given a checklist, and this is what you do. Um, and so we've been working on that, but there's, there's still a little bit of work to do to, um, clean some things up previously, um, on our balance sheet. And so, um, it's frustrating that it's not done yet. It should be done by now, but, um, they're really helping us, um, through this process. So, we've been, uh, spending a lot of time preparing for the departure of Mr. Folsom and, uh, Mr. Heron. Um, and, uh, kind of the last thing I wanted to mention is that, um, all of our road maintenance equipment that was approved by the council, except for the hot box, has been delivered. And, um, if we could just get the weather to cooperate, we'll get all of our staff trained on its use. Uh, it was scheduled at one point and had to be canceled. It's currently scheduled for next week, um, so hopefully that will happen. And if we have a window of, uh, clear weather, you'll see the equipment around town, um, providing some badly needed pavement rehab. So, a lot of organizing cleanup around City Hall. There's kind of phase two of our purging of a lot of surplus items in our storage area that will be, um, initiated again tomorrow morning, bright and early. So, um, with that, that's my report.
Question, I, I like it that we have some fresh audit eyes looking at this. That's, it's always good to, to do that. Um, I thought the last couple of times I've seen the auditor come in, it looked like a, you know, stage tour, you know, a little.
Yeah, it was, it was time.
Yes.
George? Okay, I have a lot to report. Um, I met with, uh, Mr. Purdock about some ideas about, um, helping the community center and the senior center. Uh, in the meantime, I've got some good, uh, workers in my office right now, so we've been looking for grants for the community building and different things that we could do there. We've actually found a few that we might be able to apply for, so that's been nice to kinda have some fresh eyes to help me out, uh, 'cause it does take time to do that. So, we've been kinda searching down those grants, so I may be bringing some to you to say, hey, here's some ideas. I'd like to just make a couple of announcements. Um, as we know, it's, uh, that, uh, the Vietnam veterans, they're having an event tomorrow, um, the twenty-ninth at noon, uh, at one-five-one-four-five Lake Shore Drive. Please come and show your support for our vets. Uh, that was a hard, definitely one of the, probably the hardest wars outside of the recent ones, but in the past. Um, we have, uh, Operation Tangle Mike, uh, and, uh, with the 4H group that's, uh, doing a fundraiser, uh, walk, uh, walk or run-a-thon on the Saturday, the thirtieth. So I just kinda wanted to get those two out there to everybody. And the, uh, senior center is having a Mardi Gras tomorrow night at six o'clock, so we're gonna have jambalaya or fish, if you'd like to do. It's only fifteen dollars, so please come down and join and support the senior centers. Um, you know, it takes the community to support all these different events, and I know sometimes we get a little tired of, you know, pitching out money, but that's how they keep going. So, uh, I really do hope that everybody gets out and tries to show, show their support the best they can, um, on all of these really special events that really mean something to our community. Uh, Operation Tangle Mike is really a seption. Uh, they do fabulous, fabulous things throughout the year. Um, people that have, I've talked to that have come back, said they were so appreciative of some of the things that they've gotten in the boxes that we take for granted, such as deodorant, you know, uh, stuff like that. It's amazing, uh, what these people do. So, uh, that's a, a really good organization that helps our military people, so, um, please support the military people this weekend. That's it.
So, uh, I attended a couple of fundraisers. Park Study Club was one, Safe House, another one, all great events to, to support particular, um, events in the, in the city. Uh, also attended a. Uh, also attended a LAFCO meeting, um, there are still several special districts that they're trying to dissolve, one of them is here in Clear Lake, it's, it's probably the predecessor of the Golden State Water District. Um, they haven't filed anything, so they have to for years, so they, the, the state is kind of, uh, pushing them to, uh, close them out and dissolve those special districts. Uh, there's, like I said, there's one of them in town here, and the rest are all over the county, and there, there, there's more muscle given to LAFCO, uh, by the state to, uh, to see if some of the smaller districts, uh, to combine them, uh, one of them, one that was pretty successful was in, uh, up in Cobb where numerous water districts were combined into one. Uh, also, I attended the marketing committee meeting, um, you should be seeing new signs going up shortly, uh, directional signs to where this, uh, also, uh, we're looking at getting an index of all the cities that, uh, the city properties and see if we can put a marketing brochure out to see if we can market those properties. That's my report.
Not a ton of, uh, items to report, I did attend the, uh, Safe House fundraiser, which was a great success for the Safe House, really glad to see people come out and support that, um, great for our community, and the, uh, did have a couple of meetings with, uh, one with the youth center and one with the, um, uh, some talks with the Little League as well, about some stuff happening at both of those locations, trying to, uh, find ways at the Little League to overcome the ongoing theft issues, so, as you probably know, every single year we have some significant thefts take place at the Little League, um, so we've made a lot of improvements this year to try to keep things like, you know, the, the air conditioner from being stolen, it every year gets stolen or damaged, so we now have a metal cage built around it, so they, um, they had opening day and they raised the flags, and by the next day the flags were stolen, so somebody had cut the steel cables that raised the flags and stole the flags, so it's kind of an everyday scenario, so we're working on some things, and actually working on, um, potentially, uh, providing in some way a wireless internet source to them so that they can have live streaming videos, so we can see on the cloud at all times what's going on at the Little League, and then, uh, maybe adding some lighting, 'cause it's very limited on lighting there, so at night it's a hotbed of activity because there's no light. So, that's one thing there, the Little League, at the, uh, youth center, um, they're working on a proposal they'll be bringing to, uh, the council, to, um, they're getting a grant from the NRA, and they're gonna actually have a, potentially build a, a facility with our approval, obviously if they get all the, all the ducks in a row, that would allow for, um, uh, children to have formal training in the use of, uh, archery and, uh, air rifles to become proficient and actually to potentially be, uh, um, all, to be educated all the way up to Olympic, um, ability, so that's a focus of theirs, the youth center right now, so that's something unique that they're putting together, um, so that's what I was working on this week. Thank you.
Uh, also attended the Park Study Club fundraiser, um, then on Monday I was, I attended another Lake Links, uh, board meeting, we're still, uh, doing our planning to, to be able to become a five oh one C three and also getting, putting together a, a three-year plan, uh, of operations, uh, looking at different things that we may be able to provide to our citizens in the county and, uh, tie in possibly with, with Adventist Health, with Sutter on, um, on transportation needs for senior citizens or those that are otherwise immobile. Um, Hope Center, been to a, a couple meetings since our last, uh, city council meeting. Still, they're working on the planning for opening, I don't think it's gonna happen before fall yet the earliest, uh, their remodeling is, is, uh, looks like it's gonna cost more than early estimates, so, and looking for more, uh, funding around for that, or more possibly changing the, the renovation to maybe downsizing it a little bit. Um, tomorrow, we're going down to Petaluma, Councilman Sluton is also going to visit the Cots facility, Cots operation there, which is something that has influenced the Restoration House in Lower Lake and also will probably influence the Hope Center, so we wanna go see if we can, uh, see how they've become successful and perhaps adopt some of, some of their methods. Um, that's all I have.
I received correspondence, uh, for myself and all of the council members from Adventist Health, it said, "Thank you for your attending and question during the Leave It Behind presentation during the February twentieth meeting. Prevention and saving lives should always be a priority in civic leadership. By supporting our presentation in a public setting, you did just that." And I believe all of you got a copy of that.
Yes.
Also, was it last Thursday, we had a special meeting at the community center where Adventist Health presented the city with a one hundred thousand dollar check that is to be allocated for the, the children's park in Austin Park, children's playground in Austin Park. Uh, I wanna thank each council person and staff who attended that, it was, uh, it was a good turnout. Other than that, I don't have anything. Anything further?
Just closed session.
Close session. Just closed session, we will adjourn from, uh, the public meeting at eight seven, eight-eighteen hours, eight-eighteen P M, twenty eighteen hours, and adjourn to closed session.